Stay tuned for a meeting of the Calabasas City Council. The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Members of the city council may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or posting an agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at cityofcalabasus.com/ctvlive. If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone. Just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name and the city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents the council from meeting or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the Calabasas City Council.
Good evening and welcome to the September 14th, 2022, City of Calabasas Regular Council Meeting. I'm Mary Sue Mauer, the mayor of the city, and on tonight I am joined by Mayor Protem Shapiro, Councilmember Weintraub, Councilmember Bazagian, and Councilmember Kraut. The Pledge of Allegiance tonight will be held by Charlotte Meyer. Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Please stand. I don't know if you, I stand, yep. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Sound wave.
Second.
Okay, we'll call, please.
Councilmember Bazagian.
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Yes.
Mayor Mauer.
Yes.
Carrie S. Zero.
All right, thank you. This evening, we met in closed session. Is there anything to report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider one item, item number one regarding conferences who are property negotiator regarding the property at 27040 Malibu Hills Road, and has taken no reportable action and has continued that item and the second item regarding existing litigation, TNHC Canyon Oaks LLC versus City of Calabasas to a further closed session after the end of this open session meeting. No reportable action is expected on either. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this evening we have a special presentation to a very special person. We're going to be recognizing Charlotte Meyer for her work on the Senior Centers Tech Help Program. And before I introduce some special guests, I'd like to tell you a little bit about Ms. Meyer, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. She is quite a remarkable individual. She was raised here in Los Angeles as an only child and attended LAUSD schools. She graduated from UCLA with a BA in history and earned a teaching credential. She went back to school at 50 years old and earned a master's in special education. She served as the Special Education Coordinator with oversight of 300 children with multiple disabilities. She served on our very own Los Virginous Unified School District Board of Education as a trustee for eight years. She moved to Calabasas before Calabasas was a city and joined the CPAA Board of Directors where she served for many, many, many years. Her proudest moment of school service, by the way, was helping to pass a school bond that provided the funds needed to design and build AC Still Middle School. And she will tell you and anyone, it's the crown of Calabasas. And I would just like to add that I met Charlotte during those days of AC Still, and I was a young parent, and it was the first government meeting I'd ever attended. And there she was up with the day of smiling and being friendly and welcoming and nodding and listening. And those are the characteristics that she demonstrates all the time when she meets someone new or is leading a group. She has extraordinary leadership skills. And we're so fortunate that she's settled here in Calabasas and in her retirement has devoted an enormous amount of time on a number of different civic activities, specifically the Senior Center, and you'll be hearing more about that. But she was on the original task force that oversaw the design all the way to purchasing the furniture, colors, everything. And then she shifted gears and went into assisting in programming for the Senior Center. And she is joined this evening by her husband Alan of 53 years, her two amazing daughters Caroline and Suzie, and their husbands Andrew and Jason, and all four grandchildren who are actively attending our Los Virginous Unified Schools. And all of them have rejoined Charlotte and Alan in living in Calabasas. With that, I'd like to welcome you, Charlotte, and I'm going to introduce our first speaker, Carol Washburn.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Mauer, city council members, city manager Meek and staff. My name is Carol Washburn, and I'm here on behalf of the Calabasas Savvy Seniors, the Senior Center, and the many seniors that we serve. This evening, we salute Charlotte Meyer for her vision, creativity, and support for the incredibly successful Calabasas Tech Help Program she developed seven years ago in 2015 to benefit our seniors. The program has reached a pivotal moment, and Charlotte is passing the baton to Senior Center Supervisor Kimberly Post to manage with her capable team. Tech Help has coordinated free one-on-one technology instruction for seniors to expand their computer skills. It is taught by local high school students who earn community service hours at the Calabasas Senior Center. Seniors can drop in for assistance with their laptops, tablets, and smartphones to learn about the internet, Uber, Twitter, Facebook, eBooks, online newspapers, shopping apps, email, Google Maps, and much more. Charlotte's efforts building the program step by step through each new stage of its evolution and her passion for education and devotion to student learning new experiences has made this program a success. She received the school district's endorsement approving community service credit for the student volunteers. What a great accomplishment. These positive connections among the seniors, students, and teachers, and leaders of the school district foster a nurturing environment of trust, innovation, and learning at the Senior Center and the newly established Calabasas High School Tech Help Club. The Tech Help Program has been incredibly rewarding from its beginnings to this promising time. We're seeing seniors engaged in learning new technology, adding to our sense of accomplishment, greater confidence in our abilities, not to mention impressing our own adult children and grandchildren with our intergenerational online communications. Charlotte, we admire your vision, energy, and dedication to Tech Help. Your development of this program and time invested in the Senior Center's success and representing us on the Parks, Recreation, and Education Commission has been exceptional. Congratulations on your achievements, and we honor you tonight with a special award that reads, "To Charlotte Meyer, thank you for your vision, implementation, and support of the Tech Help Program 2015 to 2022." And here's your award. Can you see it on the screen?
Oh, oh my goodness, it's gorgeous. Thank you. Wow. Lovely, thank you.
Wonderful. Happy that you enjoy it.
All right, I believe we have another speaker. Lois Julien?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Mauer, council members, and city manager Meek. Well, not only is Charlotte a friend and a colleague as a result of our working together on behalf of the Senior Center, but we're also neighbors. We live across the street from each other. And as neighbors, we took long, long walks together during those worst months of the pandemic. And what did we talk about? Tech Help. As a, as a result, we did. As a result, and with Kimberly Post at the helm, Tech Help never stopped. We switched the in-person Tech Help over to Zoom. And on Zoom, our high school students helped seniors and taught them how to take their classes, which were now virtual, instead of being held at the Senior Center. The students also helped our instructors because they had to learn how to give their classes over Zoom instead of within the rooms of Founder's Hall or the Senior Center. Charlotte, Tech Help is definitely one of your great accomplishments. Congratulations.
That's great. Before I turn to the council, are there any other members of the public that wish to speak on this?
Madam Mayor, oh, yeah, we do. Rosa Besar?
Welcome, Rosa.
Congratulations, Charlotte. And I am very impressed by your leadership, and I'm taking notes, dear. And it's just fun to run into you, running out of the tennis club, me with my yoga mat, and you coming out from some other classes you've been jumping around in. So onward, girl, and keep at it. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I know we had another person interested. Monica Palmer, if you still interested, please raise your hand so we can bring you in. Well, there she is. Monica, please unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hi, Charlotte. I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you again for all the help that you have given me and how much you've done for our school district. We value you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the council, Madam Clark?
No, Madam Mayor, we don't.
All right. Do any of my colleagues wish to say something? You could raise your hand. I'll start with Mayor Protem Shapiro.
Thank you. I just want to congratulate you also on this wonderful honor, but more importantly, to thank you for all the work you've done, especially for our youth. I remember your little ideas, you called it, back when you first started it about intergenerational activity and tech help for seniors with high school students. When you first brought it forward, and look what it is now. We have an amazing group of seniors who are now college seniors who started the program years ago as well or have graduated, and they help everyone. My kids tell me I need to come there all the time because I have no clue what I'm doing. So I hope to sign up soon when I have some free time. But it is a tremendous program that came out of your thoughtful process and caring for the community. So thank you.
Councilmember Kraut.
Yes, I just wanted to say congratulations, Charlotte. It's great to see you being recognized for this, but I think, like it's already been said, I had no idea you were so heavily involved in this. I've always seen you involved in so many things. I didn't know you had the bandwidth to handle this too. So we really appreciate everything that you've done for us and your service on the Parks, Recreation, and Education Commission right now. And we, we look forward to your continued input. You've been a valuable resource for me and I'm sure for most of the city as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Congratulations, Charlotte, on this well-deserved honor. This is such an important program in the city, and it's absolutely no surprise that it was started by you and supported by you. And I also just think it's so wonderful how involved your whole family is in the community and just job well done. Congratulations. Look forward to our market run-ins and wherever else I get to see you. So congratulations.
And Councilmember Bazagian?
I too wish to congratulate you, Charlotte. I remember meeting you shortly after you were elected to the school board, and you're one of those elected officials who, when they leave office, remains just as active as when they were in office. You've done so much since, since leaving the school board, just not just with the schools, but with the city and with the savvy seniors and with your community and CPAA. So thank you so much for everything you've done, and this is a very well-deserved honor, and we look forward to your continuing participation in our events.
And then, Charlotte, before we turn to you, I just wanted to add one more thing on a personal note in that as I got to know you from the three-year AC Still project and onto the pre and then into office, you mentored me in a number of different ways, but most importantly, you encouraged me to go into teaching. And you helped me set up my boards, and you just coached me, and I became a special ed teacher like you. And I owe you a lot for that. And you also feed me a lot. There are times where I'm so busy, and you would say, come over and let's eat, and you would feed me. So that's really nice. All right, do you have anything you wanted to add or?
Well, I had a few things to say, but I think everybody has summed it up pretty well. I was going to just take a walk down memory lane to describe some of the events that came, that helped us build Tech Help. And I think we could just spend a few, a minute or two on that because it included a lot of people that I wish to acknowledge. First, I want to acknowledge Tony Corrales. You don't remember this, Mary Sue, but I do. About seven years ago, we were in his office, and he said, I'm going to take you on a walk. You remember that? And he explained rather mysteriously, I have something to show you. He walked us from his office to the library and showed us two empty rooms. He said, this is for the seniors to use as you want. Can you imagine being given, no strings attached, Calabasas Prime Real Estate? This was extraordinary. Are you listening, Kendon? And the seniors pounced on it. The first thing we did was we, we bought into the notion, use it or lose it. We immediately started to program the rooms. Then I realized the rooms that we had canasted in and Carol Davis's greeting card club, we needed a name. So I called Ellen Pangoliotis from the Library Commission, and I said, we need a name for our rooms. And she named it Senior Corner. And today, that signage is posted above the doorway. So when you walk by that doorway, you're going to see Ellen Pangoliotis's sign. Then I said to myself, oh, my gosh. Necessity is the mother of inventions. I needed help with my iPhone and computer, and I figured if I needed help, others would too. And that's when I had the vision for Tech Help. That's when Tech Help was born. And then, of course, we know that we got permission from the high school. I actually called seven high schools soliciting students who wanted to help earn community service required for graduation in exchange for tutoring our savvy seniors. We had no, no students at that time. I was trying to get them. Calabasas High School and Viewpoint responded. And for two years, we offered a drop-in program for Tech Help in the Senior Corner. Now we had a name, come to the Senior Corner on Sunday afternoons. We never, ever canceled because if I couldn't show up, Doty Tishner and Ed Albrook were there to fill in for me. We even started scheduling at night. And by the time we moved to the Senior Center, Tech Help was an established program. It had a brand name, and we offered, like Carol Washburn said, free Tech Help. And also, I just want to add one more thing. We do have a video starring Kathy Matson and Zach Davis demonstrating a typical Tech Help session. And this was produced by Michael Russo. So there are many, many people who helped make this possible, but I have to acknowledge my husband, Alan Meyer. If I'm the rocket, he's my launching pad. Without his support, I would be grounded. My two daughters, Caroline and Suzie, are my in-house tech helpers, and so are their children. So if you want Tech Help, go to the Senior Center any Wednesday from 4:00 to 7:45, and we have students, our tech students, just waiting to help you. Thank you.
Well, that's lovely. Well, thank you again for all of your service throughout the time you've been here in Calabasas in teaching and mentoring and helping and being kind. It's, it's been noted by many. Thank you. Okay, gosh. Let's move on to the Sheriff's Crime Report. And Deputy DeMeteo? Are you with us this evening? Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Perfect. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am Deputy DeMeteo. I'm going to present the crime report for the month of July 2022. In this month, we did have 27 Part 1 crimes with an increase in 16%. Let's get started. We did have one strong-arm robbery. This was in a, this incident occurred at an establishment on Agora Road. The suspect ordered $116 worth of food and failed to pay for it. When an employee attempted to stop this individual from leaving, the suspect slapped and pushed the employee on their way out. We did have three residential burglaries. All three were in different locations throughout the city. And one of the burglaries entry was made through the backyard and through a rear sliding glass door that was unlocked. Suspects got some watches and some jewelry. Another burglary happened in a vacant home where the only thing stolen was a chandelier. We did have another burglary where the suspects entered the backyard. This seems to be a common theme. They removed the screen door from one of the windows, and in the process, the victim was alerted by Ring camera of motion in their backyard. Activated the Ring camera and the motion sensor lighting in the backyard, and it scared the suspects off. We did have eight vehicle burglaries. Four of these burglaries occurred at the Calabasas Stairs Trailhead. It's a popular workout destination. The other two, excuse me, the other four occurred in various locations throughout the city. And in every one of these burglaries, a window was smashed and value property in plain view was taken. Purses, watches, phones, cash, credit cards, et cetera. And in some of these cases, credit cards were used at local targets before these individuals were even done with their workout. We had five grand theft, grand theft incidents. Three of the five thefts were retail-based at local shops. One occurred at a hotel where an iPad was stolen, and the other occurred at a business on Los Virginous Road where copper wire was taken. Did have three stolen vehicles. One occurred from Old Topanga Canyon Road. It was a 2001 Chevy Silverado. That vehicle was recovered a short time later by Temple Sheriff Station. We did have one vehicle stolen from Lupine Lane. This was a 2000 Chevy Astro van. The van was recovered a short time later by LAPD West Valley. And we did have one additional vehicle stolen from the Commons. So 2018 Cadillac Escalade. And that vehicle was also recovered by LAPD Topanga Division. That concludes my report with 27 Part 1 crimes. Were there any questions, comments, concerns?
If any of my colleagues has a question or comment, Councilmember Bazagian, I see your hand is up.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Deputy DeMeteo.
Good evening.
I, I noticed the crime rate keeps going up, and it's noted here on a monthly basis as to what the crime rate, how high it's gone up in relation to last year. But I know these reports are cumulative. And I know last year, the crime rate went up significantly from 2020. So I'm wondering if in the future reports, if there could be a couple columns of the last few years because that really tells a much different picture because the crime rate isn't up just 16.3%. If you go back a couple of years and you add the accumulations, it's up like 50%, 60%, which is a much higher rate. I think the public would be much more informed as to that. For example, like the residential burglaries are more than double this year than they were last year. But if you go back far enough, it's, it's, it's much higher. So I just, if you could just add that one column or a couple of columns of a few years, however many, when it started going up, I think it would be helpful to better understanding. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Thank you, Deputy DeMeteo, for everything that you're doing and for bringing this information to our community. I know we're going to be meeting as part of our Public Safety Task Force to discuss the burglaries taking place through our open space. And I just want the community to know that this is a priority that we are trying to address because, you know, we do so much to protect the front of our homes and with gates and security and lighting, but we really have to figure out the open space component. So just want the community to know that we are working on that and to thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay, and I just wanted to add, while we're focusing on open space access to homes, I've been noting a pattern, or maybe I'm wrong, of it seems like cars are coming off the 101, hitting the businesses or the homes, and jumping right back on the 101. How are we coordinating with our LAUSD, our Los Angeles Police Department? How are we, how are we preventing that, or can we?
Yeah, so we do have the flock system in place in locations off freeways throughout Calabasas. So just because that person isn't caught that night, we, you most likely get a description of that suspect's vehicle, and we can track those people at a later date. And if, in any instance, whether there was a crime occurred in Calabasas and the suspects move over to LAPD Woodland Hills, Topanga area, we do notify them in progress and if necessary, ask for their assistance at that time. So we are in close contact with LAPD at any given moment.
That's great. At some point, I know you wouldn't have time to prepare tonight, but maybe you could give us an update on how effective the flock system is in these very types of crimes of fleeing our community. So thank you. Thank you for the public service you provide our community.
Thank you, ma'am.
Is there anyone else that has anything? I don't see any hands up. All right, thank you very much.
Take care.
All right, we're on to council comments and announcements. Mayor Protem Shapiro? Do you have any comments, announcement? Let me move on to Councilmember Bazagian, any?
I did. I learned today that there is a docent program starting for the Wallace Annenberg Wildlife Crossing, and they are now taking applications for docents. You do not have to have any prior experience, but they are going to need to give you a little training. It's a wonderful opportunity. There's a little, I'm sure you can't see it, but there's a little postcard here with the information. What we'll be doing is we'll be putting it in the next edition of eNews so you can go and apply. And I think Mayor Mauer has indicated she's going to put all the information in her weekly letter. Please consider doing this. It would be a great service to the public. They plan to station the docents at the Wildlife Crossing when it's open, and they plan to start the programs early next year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? Councilmember Weintraub?
Just wanted to announce that the city's Walk-in Flu Clinic will be taking place on Saturday, October 1st at 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. The information is on our website, and I believe you need to make an appointment before showing up, just like last year. But it was really easy to do. And also, Mayor Mauer and myself are hosting through the mayor's Youth Council Young Voter Night. We're going to be going over what's on the November 8th ballot, and it's a great way for the young people in our community to learn what's happening, and that is taking place next Tuesday at 6:00. Is in Founder's Hall? Are we in Founder's?
It's going to be in the Senior Center.
The Senior Center.
Senior Center.
Senior Center, thanks. So that is also taking place.
Great, thank you. And Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Thank you. Did anyone talk about Regal? Or I don't want to duplicate that.
About?
I'll just indicate that unfortunately, as of tonight, the Regal Theater in Calabasas, the Edwards Theater, is closed, and that is a decision made by their company and something that was there from the beginning of the Commons, and many of us and their families enjoyed it. And we'll hear more about the plans for that site later. we'll hear more about the plans for that site later. Uh, on the follow-up on that, Calabasas Film Festival starts next week, Wednesday to Saturday and look on their website to see what they are doing. Uh, hopefully with city help and doing some scrambling to find a place to show the events other than Friday at the Tennis Center. Last but not least, I had the privilege and pleasure to be uh, with Councilmember Weintraub and Councilmember Kraut at the homecoming game for the Agora Calabasas High School Football Game. And Calabasas won resoundingly forty-three to thirteen and brought the cup home, the coveted cup home to Calabasas. If you want to see it, go to Calabasas High School. It will be presented proudly. So congratulations to the Coyotes and everybody.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Kraut.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one more thing to announce and that is coming up on Thursday, September twenty second. Uh, Sheila Kewell, our local supervisor, is sponsoring the Homeless Connect Day in Malibu at the Civic Center uh, from ten AM to one PM. That's an opportunity for uh, for you to see in person the uh, the services that we uh, you know, have out there for those uh, unhoused individuals and uh, learn a little bit more about how you can get involved and help.
Thank you. All right, um, we're moving on now to oral communication and public comment. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak at this time, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have Brian Cameron.
Okay. Welcome, Brian.
Thank you. My name is, I'm, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Brian Cameron. I'm a Calabasas resident and I'm the president of Emergency Preparedness in Calabasas, a Fire Safety Council. I just want to remind everybody that even though we had rain this week, we're still in a drought and we still live in a wildland urban interface, which is rated as a very high fire hazard severity zone. If you want to learn more about defensible space and how to mitigate the wildfire risk to your home, go to our website, www dot epic dash FSC dot com. We are five oh one C three, not nonprofit organization of volunteers created last year to reach out to Calabasas residents and help them, help them learn how to live more safely in our environment. We provide free home wildfire risk evaluations. So please go to our website. Let us know how best to reach you. Uh, and we'll make arrangements to come and uh, help you home harden your home from wildfire risk. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Um, no, Madam Mayor, no other speakers.
All right. We're moving on now to consent items one through eleven. Does any council member wish to remove any item? Raise your hand and let me know. Okay.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Buzajin?
Aye.
Councilmember Kraut?
Aye.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Mauer?
Yes.
Harry Spexero.
All right, now we're on to item number twelve. This is a recommendation to approve a memorandum of understanding with Unlimited Play Inc., a professional services agreement with Play Power uh, Little Tykes uh, Farmington Inc., whoops, Farmington Incorporated, not to exceed one point five million dollars utilization of Sourcewell and funding to replace playground equipment at Brandon's Village, which is in Gates Canyon Park. And we have with us this evening, um, staff person Erica Green. And I believe you have, you can introduce our other guests, please.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers and members of the public. I will be presenting on uh, the project for Gates Canyon Park. I have with me uh, Mr. Jor Monka from Sourcewell to be able to answer any of those questions. He will come in and uh, provide those couple of slides, present those as we get near those slides. So I'm just gonna share my screen here. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so that's moving forward. So the Gates Canyon Park, Brandon's Village, um, we're talking about the project to replace the playground equipment and porn place rubber surfacing. So a little bit of background and timeline on this project. Um, in March of twenty twenty-two, uh, there were some safety issues identified with the playground structures and the porn play uh, porn place rubber surfacing. The tot structure was closed and elements of the youth structure were removed. In May, uh, staff presented a recommendation to City Council on replacement of the playground structures. Um, it was recommended that staff return with the additional information. Um, April through June, the staff worked with Little Tykes and Unlimited Play on various playground options for council approval, uh, which went back to council um, a couple of weeks ago uh, to get more information on Sourcewell. So that's why we have Mr. Monka here today. So I will continue on here. So the play structure options, um, the approved budget by City Council is one point one million at this time. Um, there's a one million dollar structure option that requires no fundraising. So in this, in this project, if we choose to move forward with Sourcewell, uh, we will utilize Little Tykes uh, to manufacture the playground equipment and they work closely and exclusively with Unlimited Play, uh, which is a nonprofit to help build all-inclusive playground structures. Um, if they are, uh, we approve the MOU for them to assist with the project, they would assist with fundraising along with uh, Brandon's parents um, to assist with fundraising as well. So a one million dollar structure, there would be no fundraising required. Um, if we did a one point five million, that would require four hundred thousand in fundraising. And then ultimately, a two million dollar structure obviously would require nine hundred thousand in fundraising. And just reminder that in two thousand six, Brandon's Village cost uh, was eight hundred and seventy-five thousand and that was for the playground and porn play surfacing. There was no other uh, amenities or structures in that cost. So this is just a sample of a million dollar project that Little Tykes has done. Um, this is a million dollar project. This is the, a one point five million dollar project and this is actually Brandon's Village that uh, they uh, uh, did the design on the actual layout of the, of the current park. And this is one point five. And then finally, a two, two million dollar project, which is the superhero. Um, that's just, just an option uh, for the council and the public to see the types of uh, designs that Little Tykes Commercial can do. Um, so our next slide is gonna talk about Sourcewell. So I'm going to invite Joram to uh, present these slides. Joram?
Thanks, Erica. Uh, my name is Joram Manca. I'm with Sourcewell. I'm a con- contract administrator. My portfolio is mainly in the park, park and rec facilities and athletic spaces. Uh, just a kind of broad overview of Sourcewell. Sourcewell, Sourcewell is a national cooperative based out of Minnesota, but carries national and international contracts, all fifty states plus Canada. We have over fifty thousand public agency members and nineteen hundred of those members are in California. And you can kind of read along on the screen. Cooperative purchasing program is basically a way for everybody to maximize their purchasing power and cooperative purchasing in general is defined as a government unit making a purchase and then another cooperative partner, another public agency and be able to piggyback off of that purchase. Uh, it it saves our members' time and money and it allows them to have a turnkey solution such as uh, the playground that Erica is describing. Uh, there's a lot of scale and and a lot of flexibility. That's what our members really appreciate about working with Sourcewell. And uh, the transparency and our process is second to none. Sourcewell just was recently awarded its seventh national award for its procurement processes. The organization has been around for forty years uh, before it was called Sourcewell, it was called the National Joint Powers Alliance, if you are familiar with the cooperative space. So we've been around for a a long time. And uh, because we're that local government unit based out of Minnesota, the, all of our state partners, local education, kind of that sled market can work with our contracts. Those contracts are put out to bid at a national scope. And OEMs and manufacturers, they, it it's a very intense process. It's got a thousand point scale. And uh, park and rec is one of those spaces that's very competitive. We had over twenty-five world-class suppliers apply for this sector last time and only seven were awarded uh, unlimited and Little Tykes being one of them. So kind of a, a ton of text on the screen. I won't read it all to you. If there are any questions out there, uh, let me know. Uh, very uh, very interested to help out Erica and the city.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on. So um, the benefits of utilizing Sourcewell um, is reduce project time. So this reduces project time, uh, so we don't have to go through the formal bid process and Sourcewell does that for us. Um, and we, the City of Calabasas recently used uh, Sourcewell for fleet purchases and also for the Great Barber Play Structure. Um, in addition, I reached out to some of my colleagues um, in our area uh, to find out uh, their usage of Sourcewell and Agora Hills is utilizing Sourcewell for an inclusive playground that they're building. Um, Westlake Village utilized Sourcewell for a playground structure in Village Park and um, Moore Park utilized Sourcewell to purchase some electric vehicle, vehicle chargers. So in utilizing Sourcewell, we would have a partnership with Little Tykes um, who works exclusively with Unlimited Play, as I said earlier, which is a nonprofit organization that helps plan, design and build fully accessible playgrounds. Um, and then ultimately it would give us the partnership with Unlimited Play, who would assist with public outreach, community engagement and fundraising. If we choose to not go with Sourcewell and and council gives direction to uh, go a different uh, avenue, we would have to go through the request for proposal uh, process, which could extend the project timeline, which is estimated to be about six to eight months. Um, we'd have to do two separate requests for proposals, uh, one for design and one for construction. In addition, we wouldn't have the uh, exclusive use of Unlimited Play, which would require a procurement of a consultant to do that public engagement and assistant fundraising, which is estimated about a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars. The cost, um, as I mentioned before, we have roughly one point one million that City Council approved through CIP projects uh, to replace the playground equipment. Um, there's flat fees uh, which you will see on the screen. That's gonna be the same for each of these options. The only thing that's going to change is the uh, cost of the actual playground is, equipment itself and the labor to install those. Um, so we have the one million, the one point five million and two million dollar project. Um, as, as I stated, we have the one point one million, so we can easily do the one million dollar project. Uh, if we move forward, um, and we do the fundraising, any fundraising that's done, whether that be ten thousand to a million will just enhance the playground itself. So if, if they were, if we were to raise twenty thousand, we would just include another twenty thousand dollar amenity to, to the park itself or to the playground itself. So funding sources. Uh, we received the State of California Prop A or Prop sixty-eight annual allocation funds that the, the city gets uh, for their um, per capita. Uh, that was a hundred ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-three dollars, which was applied for to use for the porn place service. Um, ARPA funds, uh, the CIP was approved for the playground replacement of eight hundred thousand dollars. Also a hundred thousand for fencing and sign and then fifty thousand for fitness equipment in twenty twenty-three. Uh, we also have the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that was put aside when uh, Brandon's Village was, was first constructed for the maintenance. Um, and then ultimately the fundraising, uh, I just put an estimated number there. Uh, it could be more, could be less uh, from ten thousand to four hundred thousand dollars. So we are asking from council tonight to provide direction to staff on use of Sourcewell, um, on the preferred project option, approve funding sources, approve the agreement with Little Tykes and MOU with Unlimited Play if applicable, and then authorize the city manager to execute agreements, amendments um, within council-approved budgeted amounts with authority of the city attorney. Uh, so that's the conclusion of my presentation. I am open to questions or comments. Thank you.
We're gonna start off with council questions and then we'll follow that up with what comments. So, um, let's keep your, yeah, if you could keep this slide up and then we'll go back and forth. So let me start with Councilmember Kraut. Any questions?
Yes, thank you. A couple of questions with uh, Sourcewell in particular. Uh, that is a government agency, is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's, as I understand it, the process, you have already gone to bid with playground equipment manufacturers and Little Tyke won a four-year contract to be the Sourcewell provider, is that correct?
Yes, Little Tykes by Play Power is the OEM manufacturer. Uh, and that scenario, they won a four-year contract, correct?
And, and the way that works is you only pick one, so there is only one manufacturer through Sourcewell because that competitive bid process already ruled out the others. Is that correct?
Uh, actually, there, there can be multiple award winners in a category. Yeah, most of our categories are very uh, competitive. We a lot of times see twenty to thirty OEMs or manufacturers come into a category to compete. And then they go into this scoring process and then a natural break occurs from the procurement team. And then aw- awards will be given to those above that threshold. So in this case, there were multiple winners and uh, and, and a lot of losers uh, who were not awarded a contract and that they need to wait now for another four years for an opportunity to bid.
Okay, and when you say multiple, do you have a number for us?
Uh, I could pull up the category to be, to give you the exact number. Uh, it, it's somewhat, you know, probably in the six or seven range.
Okay. And when you bid these, are you bidding the equipment or the design and the equipment together?
That's a great question. Uh, all Sourcewell contracts are turnkey solutions. So i- in cases like this, for me and my portfolio of park and rec, it's that turnkey solution of engineering, site prep, removal, setup, uh, consulting, everything that our members need on a nationwide basis for their specific playgrounds. And that's where that scoring system comes into play for those manufacturers. They need to be able to help those local entities, such as like the City of Calabasas, with their needs. So uh, it, it's full turnkey solution.
Okay, almost done here then. Two more questions. Unlimited Play then would be the uh, designer, if you would, of these systems. So they're part of that process then, right?
Correct.
And in our number that we're getting to build this playground, how do we know that that's a competitive price? Is there a scale that we price these things on with equipment and design and installation?
So as part of that response, there is a, a scoring card where it's a thousand point system, four hundred points of every RFP is designed to go to price. Uh, and based on that scoring, that's how an award is made. So in this case, we're specifically talking about Little Tykes by Play Power. They scored very well in that scenario and were awarded uh, a majority of those points. And then that bubbles up to their award for the four-year term.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at the, the qualification base as a whole, not just the price.
Exactly. Our, our members love the flexibility and ability to know they're getting a great price. That's been, you know, the power of fifty thousand of our members give us national buying power. And then our OEMs come in and say, we'll give you this discount for all of your members. And based on, on all of that, it's that part of the bid process has been uh, taken care of on, on behalf of Sourcewell for our members.
Okay, um, I think that's it for now. I'll leave that to my uh, fellow councilmembers.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Pretend Shapiro?
Thank you. Thanks very much. Could you mind going back to the funding sources, Erica? Sure. If you can, please. Just a quick question. I probably know the answer, but I just want to verify it. I added this up quickly in my math, not as good as others, but I got, came to about one point two seven five. But now looking at it, the fencing and sign and fitness equipment, are those funds that are not considered uh, for, for the bid here?
Correct. The, the fencing sign, fitness equipment are not included.
Okay, so that brings it down to the one point one. Okay, that answers that. And then going to the park choices, the choices. I, I love the superhero idea. I think it's great. Um, I know because I'm getting some emails and I'm trying to help where I can, that, that you also are working with other projects nearby and Including Agura and previously Westlake, as mentioned, how is it possible? Or is there a difficulty in reaching out to the same pool of people asking for donation support for this new structure? Where we, where we're looking at, let's say, one point five to raise four hundred thousand. While you're doing the same thing, or they are doing the same thing in Agura for the same purpose. Is there a difficulty with that timewise?
Well, I think, like I mentioned, with the one point one billion dollar, we can build the one million dollar structure. So that's what I'm asking council here tonight, is that we can be approved to build the one million dollar structure. We are going to go out for fundraising and do what we can, but like I said, if we get ten to twenty thousand, we will add additional amenities. Specific amenities to the structure, if we get four to five hundred thousand, then we will build the one point five structure. So we are going to start with the one million dollar structure and whatever we can raise. We will do so, but Unlimited Play really has a, a strong experience in doing a stakeholder meeting. So I feel like we could raise some funds, what we could raise, I can't quite say. But if we approve the one million dollar structure, we will have a one million dollar playground, no matter if they raise zero dollars or. A million dollars, we will.
I appreciate that very much, I was just wondering if it's. If, if you've run across this before, where you're doing maybe two projects, almost not simultaneously for fundraising. Where you, you have somewhat the same pool of people you're reaching out to.
Right, and we're going to try and, and target those folks, the Brandon's Village, or Brandon's buddies, Brandon's parents. Really wants to take this on and be a part of it and have some ideas on how we can fundraise. So if we can actually target some folks and see what we can get there. Of course, we'll, we'll, we'll do the broadcast of the net, but I really want us to focus and target on those who would be interested. And have some, some buy-in for the park.
Great, thank you very much, I appreciate it, appreciate your, the opportunity to hear from you also.
Thanks so much, I'm ready to move ahead with this recommendation, but I just wanted to. You and I had discussed when we had our conversation, that the one million dollar structure, just because. So we're not waiting during the fundraising time, just want to confirm that the one million dollar structure can be built. And then if you fundraise, say, two hundred thousand dollars, you might be able to add some equipment, correct?
That is correct, so they will be done concurrently, so we'll be working with Little Tykes in the design, doing our public workshops. Getting, getting input from the public and also doing our fundraising, so during that time, if we fundraise, whatever we fundraise, Little Tykes will add into the design. And as we get closer, they'll just keep adding in additional amenities. At some point, yes, we'll have a timeline of when we have to stop that fundraising, so we can do the construction, but yes, it will not hold it up. We will move forward with them of one million dollar.
So the one million dollar project can be built or worked on while the fundraising is still taking place?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, so there's no issue that things will be held up during the fundraising.
Correct.
Thank you so much.
All right, I think it's my turn, I don't see. Anyone else, so, um, thank you for this information, Erica, thanks for bringing it back and clarifying, I have a few, a few questions. So if the manufacturers already selected. Well, let me back up, I noticed that I believe the manufacturers in general come from all of North America, is that correct?
Uh, Jorm, can you answer that? I, I believe you do, yes.
Yeah, and I would caveat with it, it depends. Sourcewell and the procurement department prefers manufacturers and OEMs that can. Service our members on a nationwide basis, and many of those are done through local dealers.
Okay. So we could, we could anticipate that there would be, that, well, you can tell me, there's a USA dealer near us for Little Tykes product?
Yes, it, it sounds like, and speaking with Erica, she's spoken with the, the West Coast rep of Little Tykes. Greg, and you're working with that local dealership that services your area.
I, I guess one of the challenges I have with this process is we're embarking. On developing procurement policies, green policies. And, and if we went through Sourcewell, we would get the manufacturer that's been pre-selected for us, correct?
You can choose from all awarded suppliers that service your area, Little Tykes being one of them.
Oh, okay, so Little Tykes is not the final.
No, you can look at those awarded suppliers and pick the one that's best for you, and you know, I know. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I, I was just going to say that. That is part of when we develop our. Our bid or, 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 or RFP, if it, it is called that. We could put in there that we want it made in the USA or made in the United States, I'm sorry. Made of recycled products, et cetera, we can put some criteria in, correct?
Yeah, the, the Sourcewell contract actually allows for additional terms and conditions with any of our suppliers. At the purchase order level, so if you had additional local requirements, and this allows, this is the flexibility of the Sourcewell contract. If there is additional bond requirements, green requirements, you can work those in with your chosen supplier to meet the needs. Of, of your local area.
Okay, that sounds great, we have a sustainability procurement meeting this week, so Erica, maybe we could just get a little bit more information. On that, and then just a couple other questions, Erica, this one's for, for you. Where does the pre, our Park Recreation and Education Commission come into this project?
Sure, if, if council approves for us to move forward with Sourcewell. They would begin the designs of the playground equipment, at which time we would get public input. And then ultimately the pre would have feedback on those structures and amenities. To move forward, so that's where they would come in, council, we're asking for approval of funding and use of Sourcewell.
And when you say amenities, what's, I, I understand equipment, but what amenities?
I'm talking like specific, like the teeter totter or the rope structure, things like that.
Okay, and then these type of purchasing cooperatives? Do, is there one that's California-based that does rec, park and rec? Equipment, I looked on, I'm so curious about this concept, I really like it. And so I did a little research in the state of California, on the DGS Department, Department of General Services. Has a number of purchase cooperatives with different types of. Products like IT and computers, and that was one, paper supplies and, and office supplies. Do, does the state of California have something like this? And I would think that if it does, there might be a tax advantage for the state if we did business. With a cooperative, or I'm, I'm, I'm wondering. What are the losses revenue-wise for the state for us locally if we go outside to Minnesota?
Well, to answer your first question, there, there is a California cooperative, which we can speak with Jorm a little more about that, but it, that. Is more geared towards state-level agencies, where Sourcewell is more local level agencies. And he could speak a little more to how. The tax base and revenue is for our, if we utilize Sourcewell, it goes to our local community or. But yes, there is, there is a, a state cooperative, and Jorm, if you could. Go into detail a little on that, please?
Yeah, I, I'm not a, a California expert on, on all contracts, but there, there is something called, you know. DGS is, is one of those options. A, a lot of times states utilize Sourcewell as the boilerplate for their state contracts. So they adopt the Sourcewell contract to become the state contract, and that kind of leads into what I think everyone's talking about here with a CMAS contract. So that's the California multiple schedules, or, or multiple award schedules, I believe is the acronym. It's a process, you could go down that route. In terms of cost to our, our members, all Sourcewell contracts have a zero cost involved with them directly. And in terms of the tax base, it's another one of the advantages for our, our members. Is they work with that local dealer and it's a local installer, it's a local site team. It's the, the money, the money, those POs get made out to the local dealership, so the money stays inside of that local area. And inside of the state, in many cases. Even though we're a Minnesota-based cooperative. And be awarded the OEM and manufacturer level, our members interact at that local dealer level. And that's where kind of that virtuous cycle is for many of our members.
That's great, you should add that to your brochure, I don't, unless I didn't dig deep enough, that's great.
It's, it's, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on here, it's, but I'm glad I got a chance to talk.
It is, it's very interesting, back to you, Erica, this fundraising option that you're presenting for this park. Why don't we do this for every park? Or are you going to do that as we move towards redesigning some of these? Parks like Wild Walnut and, you know, Freedom and. Deansha, having a fundraising component to add additional. Features and amenities and equipment.
Yes, sure, so I think where the, the fundraising came up, it, it really was Brandon's buddies. That, that really wanted to assist in fundraising like they did in two thousand and six. So that's, that's where it stemmed from, and then Unlimited Play happened to fundraise as well and, and work exclusively with Little Tykes. So it just kind of went hand in hand. If, if there were groups that wanted to fundraise. For certain park projects, we can definitely do that, but it was really Brandon's buddies that spearheaded that.
Yeah.
Fundraising aspect.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I know for sure there's a very active group in Wild Walnut. And there's a very active group in Deansha, I think that the community would be very happy. To add features if given that choice. Those were my questions, and I'm not seeing any other hands up for questions, so let's start with comments. And I'm going to start with, if you don't mind, Councilmember Misogene, you didn't have questions, do you want to start with comments?
I, I don't have any comments.
Okay, anyone, comments? I'm not seeing any comments.
I have a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just excited to get our parks rebuilt, so I think this is a step in the, a first step in the right direction. But I'm anxious to get these parks rebuilt and reopened.
Great, Councilmember Crowe?
Yeah, thank you, I'm excited to get these rebuilt and reopened as well. I, I am still concerned with the Sourcewell process. Sourcewell, I think, is a great tool for when we're buying vehicles, because when we buy a Prius. On Sourcewell, we get the pricing that they've already worked out. If we were to buy the play equipment from Little Tykes, we would have the pricing that they've already worked out, but when we do a turnkey solution through Sourcewell. The pricing of the design and all the other intangibles is wide open. And I'm, I'm just concerned that we're, we're not protected as far as the price there. Sure, they, I, I understand that they're, they're vetted for good service, but it sounds like there's multiple choices there. And from the design side, I just don't see that this process effectively bids. The cost of the project, because the cost of the equipment is in. Only a portion of the total cost that will be paid into Little Tykes, so I'm not sure I'm on board with this.
Do you want to respond, Erica, or? Our Sourcewell guest?
I think that's a, a valid concern, it's a concern we hear often from our, our members. And working with that local rep and their local contacts to ensure there's clarity in all of your quotes. To understand how the pricing was determined, to ensure you're getting. The, the best pricing that was agreed to as part of the contract. Are all great steps to ensure you get the maximum value of your, out of your turnkey contract. It's what we recommend to all of our members, and. We, we have, you know, nineteen hundred members in California, over five hundred cities are utilizing these contracts. And I, I think the point is an important one, you can buy police cruisers and you can buy these park and rec type things a, as well. And just looking for transparency, looking for clarity, making sure everything is line-listed, so you understand how the pricing works is. A, a great path forward to en- ensure great use of taxpayer dollars.
Anden, do you want to respond to that?
No, Mayor, I don't have any comments.
Okay. Council, Mayor Pretem Shapiro.
Thank you, I was just going to say, I agree, we need to get our parks back up and running and working, and this is. We have a number of them to deal with, a number of our recreation facilities, and I think this is. A great opportunity to start the process, I want to see if we approve this tonight as a council. That we get the fundraising also component, because the best we can do at this time, and the more, the better. For our community and especially for Brandon's buddies, Brandon's village, so I am ready to move this forward and support it right now.
We do have a member of the public who wishes to speak, Madam Clerk?
John Suara. Or John. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
It is John Suara, hi John, go ahead, please.
I guess I have a question, when I see these numbers being tossed about. In terms of a million dollars and a million and a half and, and two million. I sort of feel like they should be able to have some sort of a conceptual design. Of what is it that you can expect for that kind of money? And, you know, here we are talking about having to go do a design and not knowing what it is. That you have, and, and I, and. The. The. Number that, you know, where Peter talked about a Prius, I mean, you know, that is something you can see and you can feel. You know, what I've seen so far is I've just seen some sketches on a, on a piece of paper. But I don't see any conceptual idea of what that's going to be, and there is a park there. And that park has been a beautiful park, it's attracted people from all over, my grandkids. When they were young enough to enjoy a park like that, we were down there all the time on all that equipment. And so what, what equipment are we talking about? I mean, is it just swings, as it slides, is it, you know, just a, just an idea of a. Of what it is that we're looking at for, for the, for the money, thank you.
Thank you. Erica, was that superhero look? What we're talking about, or is it up to the pre to help work with staff to come up with the concept?
Correct, those, those were just to show what, what could be done for those amounts of money. That's why we don't necessarily have designs or sketches, one, we have to get approval of the amount of money that, that we can put towards the park. Two, we would have to get public input for that, get those designed, go to the pre, so that, that's the steps that we need to take.
Okay, so there, so this is, this is a typical process that follows with public engagement and. And making determination, okay, great. Any other comments, questions, if not, I'll entertain a motion. And can you, Erica, can you pull back up that last slide on what actions, right, now we're approving? One million or. The project options. Are, what again? I'm looking for the monetary amounts, I think you were asking for one million or. I just.
Sorry, the actual funding, the one point one million has already been approved in the, in the CIP. Budget, so all, all of the funding is already approved. It's the, what we need council to approve or provide direction on is the use of Sourcewell. And the project option, which would be the one million if that's the case. Approve the funding sources, which has already been done, and approve the agreement with Little Tykes and MOU with Unlimited Play if applicable. So one point one has already been approved in our budget. So one point one has already been approved in our budget.
Right. All right. Is anyone willing to make a motion on everything that's there to proceed on using Sourcewell? Um, identifying a preferred option, which again was one million? What was the other amount, Erica?
Um, the one, there was a one million, one point five million and two million. Uh, but if the council, if the council's comfortable with the one million and with the fundraising, then it's already done.
I'll make the motion to use Sourcewell, and I'd recommend the one million option, because then the the fundraising is on top of that.
I'll second that.
Um, and there's more. Um approving Little Tykes and an MOU with
Approve agreement with Little Tykes and MOU with Unlimited Play. Authorize the city manager to execute a agreement amendments within council-approved budget amounts, including the authority to authorize the associated payments purchases in accordance with the terms of the agreement subject to the approval of the city attorney.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion, any further discussion? Look. Hmm, I'm seeing no hands up. Madam clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bazagian?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowe?
No.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Yes.
Mayor Maurer?
Yes.
Carrie's for one.
All right. And Erica, thank you so much. Um, and Jerome, thank you for being available today. And thank you to the Kaplan's. Um, this is an exciting endeavor we're heading towards. So thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Gosh, we're almost done here. We are on informational reports. We have the check register for the period of August thirteenth through August twenty fifth, twenty twenty-two. Are there any questions? And I'm not seeing any. Um, moving forward to task force reports, does anyone raise your hand if you have a task force report? Councilmember Crowe?
Uh, yes, I attended the League of California Cities Conference down in Long Beach over the last uh three days of last week, along with councilmember Bazagian uh and our city manager, our city clerk, uh Mayor Protem Shapiro, and uh we had great representation down there and got a lot of great information on things like broadband service uh and uh homeless outreach and uh uh community outreach and just great topics down there. So it was definitely a worthwhile event.
Great. Councilmember Bazagian?
Uh, yes, that was gonna be my announcement too. I, I was there and uh I, I won't repeat what Peter said. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. I'll just note that I went, I attended the Clean Power Alliance monthly meeting and the subject of the elections and turnover of council members who are board members uh was raised, and it looks at like as many as one third of um the board elected officials on CPA are either not running again or are up for reelection. So um they are looking at onboarding new representatives as soon as possible. Um, so that there's a smooth transition. I'll be bringing forward more information about that soon. And Mayor Protem Shapiro?
Thank you. Briefly, I attended uh a number of meetings in SCAG, uh CHD and Regional Council Meetings, also attended the Valley Economic Alliance uh instead of a uh form of a gala, they had a, a night where they honored uh certain businesses in the community. It was very well attended and nice. And I had the pleasure to attend the local office holders luncheon for VICA and speak about emergency preparedness and wildfires, which was my question to a large group of representatives from all over.
Great, good. All right, um, city managers report.
Thank you, mayor. Just a couple of items um as a follow-up from one of our recent meetings uh with, in regards to our climate action plan. Uh, staff has been working with Dean Kobani and Walker Wells, and we've finalized an amendment uh to their contract and are excited to continue working with them. Um, we're in the process of signing that, but we've agreed on the, the details and uh we're excited to have them on board and help us through that next step of the process. And we'll be talking with the Sustainability Task Force more about that tomorrow. Um, I do want to let the council know this is uh, a, a little bit um early, but there is a chance that the city may receive additional funding for the last version is creek restoration. Um, this is a, again, crossing our finger, fingers, and I'll let you know more when it's finalized, but uh they're looking for shovel-ready projects and Alex Versadi has, has done well to be prepared in the case of money coming available. And so we might be able to do some additional um uh projects there. And so we're excited about that, if that all comes to fruition. And I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. And that's all I have, mayor.
That's wonderful news. Thank you. Um, do any council members have any requests for future agenda or information items? Councilmember Weintraub?
Um, I just wanted to confirm when the county charter amendment is going to be on our agenda.
You know, I thought it was
That's at the next meeting.
Great.
Twenty eighth.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Anyone else? Anything else?
Um, have we considered putting the uh, because we, we generally do the uh school bond measure uh on a future agenda for consideration of taking a position?
We can do that for sure. So Mari, that's the, the one that's on the November ballot for the school board?
Measure S.
On to measure, mm-hmm. Yes, measures.
Yep. All right. And then um we are going to go back into closed session, so I will not be adjourning. Um, and our next meeting is in two weeks. Mari, what is that? The twenty eighth?
Correct, Madam Mayor.
All right, Wednesday, the twenty eighth. And thank you all for joining us.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
And for the council, uh the clerk circulated a new link for closed session.